Um.
I'd like to call to order City of Twin Oaks Board of Alderman meeting for January the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please stand up for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation under our head, with all the courtesy and justice strong.
Paul, roll please.
All right, here. All the first year, all the Stowe.
Here.
All the one. Here, project.
Here. We have an agenda for tonight's meeting, which has been published. There are no changes to the agenda. I ask for motion to approve the agenda. Your agenda.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda approved? Have any citizen comments at this time? Me on Facebook. Okay. We'll go on to the consent agenda, which is Board of Alderman regular meeting minutes from December the fourth. Close session minutes from December the fourth. Bills list November thirtieth, December twenty-seventh. Bills list from December twenty-eighth, January tenth. Credit card statement for November, credit card statement required incentive. Any discussion about any of those items? There are none. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Close consent agenda is approved. Board of committees, we have a new officer joining us tonight back from vacation, Officer Wager.
All right, the month of December, had twenty-eight radio calls, hundred and ninety-six self-impugiated, which generated twelve reports and twenty-two traffic stops. We had eleven auto crashes, family stayed in one forty-one. Pressing Golden Oak. Parking lot stayed in and went to Fairmac Station. No crimes reported. I love a whopping one hour and seventy-two minutes. I want to bring something up to your attention. The twentieth annual Police Explorer Derby Night. It's gonna be March the second, at doors open at five and start at six out of Fairmac Club. I know last year we didn't get to you in time, but the date sets. I want to bring that to your attention. Once I get prior, I'll bring it up to you guys. Any questions on any of that? For me, a team chair? Good, big time. Uh, so the yearly totals, the only thing that really stood out was the second page, the felony arrests. That is due to the destruction of property in the park and church. Uh, that's what, that's the only thing that helped that from previous years. Other than that, everything looks to be in nothing really stands out. Everything is trending the same. And crime reports are the same from previous, previous years. We had one did, but that's the end of all. And the other page that is just the, uh, bylaws. Reading and joining. That's everything I have.
I have, uh, not a question, but I have more or less a comment tonight. I Big Bend in one forty-one. Um, for some odd reason, when it snows, if you go down Big Bend and you look, county has sign, maintenance sign says maintenance stops here. Then as you go through the intersection to the other side, picks back up where the church is. Right. MoDOT doesn't fly. Correct. So we have an intersection, which is the most dangerous intersection in this area, fully unfouled during snow. And I can't figure out why county and MoDOT can't get their act together, figure out who's really responsible for that intersection. And I, I think we're gonna need police's help with this here because this, this last snowfall was extremely dangerous for several days. So we're gonna have to be reaching out to, I guess it's MoDOT. MoDOT, or I'd like to get MoDOT and county together and say, look, one of the two needs to be found. We need to get this figured out. Everything else in the city was in really good shape except for that intersection.
Cause, you know, county won't file because state borders go all the way up over the intersection and state, that's not on their radar at all. Yes, um, I'll loop the lieutenant in on that and see how you get it together.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have?
Hey, financial report, Dave. Hello, David. Uh, in the, uh, November and December of the financial report. We have a question. Skip, well, skip to December. I do want to stress, these are preliminary figures for year end two thousand and twenty-four. Still have some bills coming in that will be booked into, uh, for services, supplies that were received in two thousand and twenty-four. That will, that will be booked in this year. Uh, and we got a lot of revenues, uh, for the first two months. Especially sale tax and the property tax will be received in the next two months. That will be booked into, uh, two thousand and twenty-four and will take the place of what is, what was received in January, February of two thousand and twenty-four. Twenty-five will be accrued back in, in county. So, uh, those adjustments, uh, don't know, but yeah, a whole lot of the bill tax looks like it's coming in very strong. And it's all a deposit bank. So far forward, January, it is considerably higher than what was, uh, deposited in January of two thousand and twenty-four. First, uh, previous year. So we'll have a pretty big adjustment, a favorable one. Uh, having said that, if you look at our, uh, fine balance sheet, uh, at the beginning of our preliminary, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, we show fine balances two million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Uh, with, uh, over a million in general fund, you know, cash and recipients of deposits total over two million dollars. This is pretty much consistent. Everything is pretty stable throughout the year. Uh, if you look at page two of the report, uh, with revenues and expenditures, again, preliminary, so we'll have, we'll have a little bit more in expenditures that are, that are shown here as, as things come in and most, and the revenues will be adjusted. Uh, but still revenue came in at a nine percent higher than the previous year. Uh, and some of that is because of, if you look at the miscellaneous, uh, we see quite a bit of charge reimbursement funding as that, that line is. Um, we, we got ten thousand dollars in art grant. That's why the interest or governmental revenues are higher. Uh, business licenses were very strong with you. So that's why that's up. Bill tax, uh, it's up four, four percent to the year. And I expect that to be adjusted even higher. On the expenditure side, uh, ventures, uh, are up eleven percent from the previous year. All of that because it was a gap. Um, to make, I think, going to be booking some, some mortgage accounts for four years. That's very good. Um, and the categories that we've established, these new category for resident services was up seventeen point seven percent. That's the only significant increase in expenditures from the previous, previous year. And that's because snow removal was about nineteen thousand dollars higher in two thousand and twenty-four and twenty-three, which in this was two, two thousand and twenty-three, there was only like five thousand dollars spent in snow removal. Uh, that was unusual. Um, it's great. Uh, we showed this, uh, break down the detail of the sale tax and the, uh, the different elements there. Uh, the total up four point six three percent. And it's showing a, a pretty flat incline over the years, uh, now that kind of the sale, the, the business, uh, in, uh, or businesses are pretty stable. Not a whole lot of new or, 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 or businesses closing or something like that. So, uh, we, uh, that's pretty much the expectation. And the, the last page gives, uh, shows where we are budget-wise, two thousand and twenty-four. Again, sales tax shows that it didn't quite make budget, but I, I expect that to actually be adjusted upward. But we're buying the, uh, expenditures, the still, more expenditures we found, but still gonna say well below a hundred percent of what we did. So we get much this end of the year about one million, nine sixty-seven. Uh, but it's obviously gonna be quite a bit higher. I would.
Thanks.
For creativity. In and all.
What is bombing? Getting very bad. Um, few items, uh, the park lighting event, we continue to get really positive feedback on the, and I think our appendix was obviously giving one of the passing. Uh, one of the things Paula's done is to look into the probability of maybe have, she's looking into food truck in general for various events. And what, what kind of minimums and what kind of availability and so forth. But there's one called Joe's Coffee. I think might be a good one for that. And we're also gonna try and use it somehow for that event. Or maybe work with the church to see if they have a buyer that would be interested in coming out and seeing if she's a special pair of, or, or a children's flyer or if not that, at least, uh, some kind of, uh, you know, something we could play using. Uh, the smorgasbord event for this Friday, maybe we haven't thought completely through. I think it was a bright idea, but, uh, we are, we can't do that for, for this year.
Well, we're, we're still waiting, I should see whether it's gonna be on Friday.
I, I think we have a pretty strong consensus to fix it, both, um, like if you're on. Um, it may not make the most sense to plan an outdoor activity this time of year.
This is gonna make you.
Thank you. And I were the only two that really said, we think we ought to cancel that.
Oh.
The others, the others were kind of, well, the way the weather is, but maybe, maybe we ought to just wait and see.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, Dan said, I'll watch your camera. Joe said he could take it. Those were the other experiences. So I'll table that for now. Um, the next event on the calendar is Saint Patrick's Day, and we have originally a folder.
Chingo, no, Ching, Chingo.
Oh, oh, you're right. Chingo. The Chili and Bingo Night, which I affectionately rename Chingo. Um, everything's on, on track for Chingo. We've, uh, county's out getting the prizes, I believe, and, uh, I think we've got everything else in line for, for that event. Any questions on that? There's no, no substantial changes to Chingo, except this year we're gonna have a lot of extra pretzels that we didn't have and had in the past. We have a ton to add anything. Um, and then Saint Patrick's Day, and I, have you had any more discussions?
No, I guess not.
So, uh, we had this idea of something like a pub for all. And, uh, we went and talked to our new liquor store partner. And they, uh, got really excited about doing a whiskey case, really excited. You know, with a number of other items, uh, that would, they would, uh, help to promote it, make it a bigger deal, maybe get proximity for, uh, and, and thinking about it, and part of the mayor, we decided that, you know, maybe a whiskey tasting is probably not the best thing for us to be involved in. As a city, from a liability standpoint, but we will need to chat with our attorney. A little more just tell about that. But it looks like, rather than that being a Twin Oaks event, it may be a Savon liquor event, and that we are, are kind enough to help the community about and be involved in. That's, that's kind of what we're heading for. The conference fall. Right on the right.
Ball, that's it.
Anyone else? All right. Um, other than that, a couple of quick updates. Uh, Cindy's contacting some of the fans in the area for our, uh, musical events and, and along with the July third to, uh, make sure about availability and get those put. And, uh, we're in the process of already doing some planning and looking at some things in terms of whether or not we want to make any changes for family bundle. And that's about it. Questions? Thank you. Maybe with the pretzels, we call it, for Chingos. You mentioned that Japanese, uh,
Hachi.
Yeah.
That's, uh, pinball.
Japanese pinball. Okay, no, your global business, new business, uh, I want to make a couple recommendations for appointments to committees. Uh, the first one I want to push forward is Ryan, who happens to be in the audience. Ryan McGowan, who is volunteering to step up and serve on Fanning and zoning. So I would like to nominate Ryan. You know, I'd like a motion.
Could make a motion directly. We accept that nomination. With that, you have to come out straight. There it is.
Only Wednesday.
Zero second. I'll say half second. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. And I have, I have a second for board of adjustment, uh, this one surprised me, but I'm very happy about it. It's Paul Brockman. Many of you know, or some of you may not know, Paul used to be chairman of the board, Twin Oaks, for many years. He served on the board. Uh, he has a P S in forestry and knows a lot about construction and maintenance. I think he'd be a good addition to, uh, board of adjustment. So I would like to put his name forward. And I would like there is a motion to approve Paul. I have a motion to approve, uh, Mr. Brockman.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, discussion items. Potential amendments to the city code referencing trailers.
Do you want to say all that since Dennis is not present until the next meeting?
I think so. Dennis was the most outspoken on this, and I think we will. Second item is, uh, a couple of items that we have kind of been kicking around and discussing. Uh, items that we thought possibly should go to planning and zoning for consideration. Right.
Sure. So, uh, we've had a couple of, uh, fence permits come up and there were some questions. There's some vagueness in the code about where exactly a fence can be placed, whether it's on the property line or back from the property line. And if it is on the property line, that means it's a division fence. And then we don't have anything specifying who maintains or what they previously retained said division fence between neighbors. So, um, that is something to clean up. And in terms of how much setback, if you don't want your fence to be a division fence, how far back from the property line? But that was one thing, um, that we were considering and we look at and discuss and then make recommendations before. And then the other thing is the sidewalk requirement. A few years ago, we added the requirement to have sidewalks for new subdivisions. So if a lot were split into two, but there's been some requests to make that more universal for any new development in the city. So it doesn't have to be just stuff divided that require sidewalks. So again, something that you need to talk about and then make recommendations.
Board, board?
Yeah.
Okay, the board is in agreement that we should put in to, uh, planning and zoning for recommendations.
So we'll do that at the next, I guess we'll have a meeting in February, the B and B meeting in February. So that would be the next one coming up. So we'll go ahead and contact all the.
It'd be that three. When's the next planning? Twenty-one. This month.
February.
February. I remember it was February. Okay.
Ryan gets to have his first B and B meeting already. So. Great.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, there you go.
I bloody want.
Put that.
On border fences, I do believe there is a part of this problem. Yeah. Just basically, basically it says two parties agreed to jointly maintain. But nothing in our code is specified in there.
Your neighborhood of the fence you don't want.
And if you want to retain that.
We'll talk about that.
Yeah, yeah. I was just gonna say, but it was now without a tree, good.
How about?
Or if you don't allow.
So that's three, six, seven, eight.
Yeah, yeah. On the fence. Did Dernish report?
Uh, one thing, I was, that's probably when the first thing, looking for the first thing over the journal to see what it does about disposition of excess property. And I couldn't find it in there. It doesn't say anything. So I would love her and, you know, we ought not add something like that in the next couple of years. Um, I swear we used to have one, but I don't know where it was. Maybe it was just a policy that was ran around the city a lot. So I'll ask, I'll work with the, we'll see if we can find something, I mean, if not.
The ball, we missed.
I did too.
I, I would have said the same thing. So I'll also look and see if we like our.
Yeah.
That makes no sense.
But I'll.
I can remember our old stuff.
We ran that whole building and it was.
Yes, like a little through our armband, I guess. So to see if.
And then the legislature last year passed that law that kind of changed how we do bank, um, uh, RFPs. So if, if you, if we do that, we could add a bank RFP section. Not that you have to throw out the thing, but when you do, here's how you do it. Cause it's different to other stuff. So, so about the next six months.
Yeah, that's all. City corporate report.
Okay, we have some stuff as always. Um, so first administrative updates. We added, um, take a look at it when you get a moment, the park reservation calendar availability to the website in the hopes that that will cut down on maybe a fraction of the calls that politics, when people are wanting to reserve the park. So they'll be able to look online and she can update that in real time. It's a typical calendar. So it just shows whether the data is available or it's not. And people can check, like she puts their last name in so they can check and make sure that their reservation is on there. So that'll just be a useful thing.
They have to learn from that.
No, they cannot. They still have to talk to Paula directly and pull out the application and all that. So, but they at least can see and it will cut down with, uh, how about this day? How about this day? And she's on the phone for an hour with somebody talking about their weekend. So hopefully that will help in that situation. Um, we, Paula's been looking at, uh, dates for shred events and blood drives in twenty twenty-five. And then I was just made aware that there is grants availability for St. Louis County. They have a municipal waste diversion grant that we can apply for, um, that would pay for shred events for electronics recycling. Yeah. And then there was another one, a third one that they're, um, testing out. I can't remember. But so I'm gonna look. Um, so I'm gonna look into at least the shred event and potentially electronics recycling. We know those are very, very popular. We're not sure if we have the right space for that kind of thing. Cause people line up and it's a lot of cars and so we'll have to kind of work with them.
City of Manchester has a lot of experience.
Do they? I know Manchester does them all the time too.
Winchester really is in front of that. So.
Okay. Yeah, they're super small. Yeah, that they don't have the same. The same industry. Yeah, yeah. But Manchester is not. So it'd be interesting. And they do recommend, they have several companies that do electronics recycling that the county recommends that you use for these events that have experience. So reaching out to them and they already know how to do the grants and everything. So I'm gonna be looking to press this on the calendar for twenty-five. And then if you saw, hopefully you have all got your calendar printed. I just want everybody to be aware of the cost of the calendar cause it was a little bit surprising to me when I put the whole thing together. So they are great. They look fantastic this year. Um, but they do, they are very expensive. So just note that and be aware of it when we're talking about putting together the calendar. They're about twelve and fifty dollars per calendar. So we tricked two hundred and fifty because that's the minimum that we print. Um, but they are pretty normal and expensive considering printing costs. We had a significant increase in printing costs this year over last year. Uh, so that up there is quite a bit. I have that number in mind whenever.
A lot of different condos, they're still hanging on airboxes. They've been raided a few times. Change for twelve or fifteen dollars.
Right.
Find a different way to get, get it to people.
Yeah, that's true.
Especially the people that are out of town.
Because we have to order two hundred and fifty, we always have a lot left over and we haven't. Paula did a lot of research trying to figure out if we could do a smaller quantity and it just, there was just no way around that sort of quantity. But yeah, I think we would all be open to it. This year it was me and Paula going around and sticking them at people's houses. So, um, yeah, we'd be open to a different distribution for sure, I think. So, um, for the park maintenance updates, we've had some trouble with the locking mechanism. I think you guys are all aware since I started basically at the comfort station. So, um, Paula reached out to Rainmill to talk to them about that. They have some solutions that are relatively inexpensive, that are much better system. So we have engaged them to come and install a new, I don't have a date on that yet. But right now the conversation is not locked at all. So hoping to get that rectified soon rather than later. To get that on a better schedule and it'll be easier for us to control as well. So that, that'd be. Um, quickly on project updates, uh, the Crescent Avenue, we are, I'm still working with my contractor on, um, the French list. I've gotten a lot of movement out of them in the last forty-five days or so. But I'm assured that when the weather is better, they're gonna be getting this wrapped up. So, um, we were gonna have a invoice for this bills list, but got some billing discrepancies. BFA's been really helpful helping us work that out. So we'll see another bill, I would think in February, first meeting in February. Then there'll be one final bill probably in March, I would think, is very, I guess, or maybe, maybe at this point. But the majority of it's done, which is great. Um, the Volley Lane entrance, we had the pre-bid meeting this week. So that's, this is the one where we can have fun discussion about it. So BFA brought up that we did not specify in the plans purposely. So what we're gonna do with the center. So if you guys remember, we're cutting down the island, the median. It's still going to be approximately four feet wide. But it's going to be uniformly four feet wide from front to back. So to keep the light poles and everything in there. Um, we have now just very vague language about plantings. But I know one of the things that we discussed with the board is trying to avoid the watering issue that is up there. So BFA has made the recommendation that we look at potentially more of a rock garden type situation. So I have some examples to show you guys to see if you would be, they would like to get this worked out. to see if you would be, they would like to get this worked out before we go to bid so that the contractors are aware of what they're gonna have to do in this situation, so these are some examples that I found and that BFA found that they sent over just so you can see kind of the idea, so the recommendation would be some bigger boulders like this, potentially with smaller, maybe not that small, if you're talking about, you know, keeping it all contained, obviously, some medium-sized rocks. So something of that nature, or another option is to do something more like this, stamped concrete or brick favors that would just be flat and uniform throughout, or something like this, the medium-sized rock all the way through. And then here's some examples of the bigger boulders. So Ray Frankenberg talked about, you know, maybe two to three big boulders and either mulch surrounding or rocks surrounding, so if you guys would like to discuss that, anybody has thoughts about plantings versus boulders versus rock garden making twice?
Thought we were gonna have one. Part of that, right?
I think that's not a good way to get water there.
Well, there's a big water leak there.
So if we were just, a note, if we were to make any kind of significant changes to the project at this point, um, because we are on a very tight timeline, so we're looking at construction not until wool gets out, so not until May twenty-third, and the contractors have been approximately thirty-five days, because we've advised them that they have to have it open, done, drive a wool by July second. So nobody at the pre-bid meeting was, um, put off by that, but it is a very tight timeline, so any significant changes that we made, and we've been through several iterations of this, as if you've been on the board, and you know, and talking about this Bowen Lane entrance for a while, um, it would push the project out a whole other year, so, and we're already up to this. So really the question is, do you want to put plantings back in there, and potentially that continue to be a maintenance issue with, um, our maintenance staff having to water that regularly, or do you want to go with something more low maintenance like a rock garden?
I think depending upon the type of plants that you put in there would determine what the watering requirements would be. I kind of like the combination of the rock, big rock, yeah, some plants. Maybe some that wouldn't require a lot of work. Two cactus, cactus doesn't do well here actually.
There aren't any pedestrians that would be, we talked about that in terms of the gravel size, you know, making sure that it's big enough, but there's not gonna be anybody walking through the side when you.
Cactus transplant, cactus transplant, it usually means the only concern is that it will grow quite a bit.
Okay.
And you just have to turn back over there.
Yeah, that was an issue that Ray brought up too, that I need to be mindful of the height there because of the majority lines, and he, when we were talking, I brought up natives as a, you know, something that would be more drought tolerant. He said generally natives are too tall.
Yeah. We've tried natives at the intersection. I can also share from personal experience that if there are rocks, small boys will throw them to sea.
And mulch needs to be replaced every so often, and do a lot of like fake mulch or rubber or propylene. That might happen to, might be that thing, but it's not gonna hurt anything, and it doesn't need to be replaced or rebuilt, so.
Well, in the past, we've always lost a lot of the mulch because we mulched it and mulched on top, and then mulched on top, and it went over the top of curves and it rained and mulched before it stopped growing, so this would be a fresh mulch, so be okay assuming further. I think as you're sitting there, waiting to get out on Big Ben, and you're, and you're looking at fifty cars coming eastbound on Big Ben, and you're, you're, this guy's sitting out there waiting, as everybody's changing lanes looking for a position. I think when you're sitting there, you're kind of a target, you know, I mean, I, I don't wanna say a target, I, I, I mean, we feel like an accidental target for the two cars changing lanes and, and, uh, maybe a big boulder would be. Be okay. Definitely keep people from driving through it. If what, ran it to you as you're sitting there, so something to consider. But you could have a combination or two, you could have the larger boulders, a couple or three, or whatever fits in there, with the smaller ones. And maybe a, a few more or less drought plants, something in there, if you could just see all the rock.
We also did consider, um, the addition of planters, so more removable planters in there, so that if we had rock, we could do like a low planter with some plants maybe in spring, and then when summer comes and the watering needs are too high and it's very difficult to keep up with them, then we just take the planters out, so that is also an option that would be something we could add after the rock garden.
Is there no water line that we can tap into? There's definitely a water line there, I don't know whose it is, I, I, I know the neighbors. The neighbors there on the corner didn't really want it, contribute. Won't be their, their water line despite the problem, but. Seems like there would be some source of water. I always thought the biggest problem there was too much, because we, because the plants were getting too much water from the beach that it said. Then we were coming along on top of it, watering it more, I guess, I don't know.
Just the area that it's in makes it a difficult place for any plants to thrive because of the, of the traffic, cars coming in and out, you know, it's challenging planting area, even if without irrigation.
Water is a permanent problem.
I kind of, kind of like the idea of, you know, if you have the main body here, if you do have the smaller rock, you can leave space to put planters on. Kind of like that.
You do the same thing if you do the favors, that, and, I mean, they do that throughout all of Manchester or everything, at Ellisville, I think, yeah.
The only concern about the favors was people driving all of it.
Yeah, that's why I would want something big there, you're right, I would, yeah, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that if there wasn't something.
Could you do, could you do the favors with a couple of quick boulders on there, would that look hard?
I don't know, and now I'm, yeah, I mean, I like the idea of, uh, having it be as low maintenance as possible, I also, uh, think most of us here have probably areas of our yard where we, and I have done the same thing, looked at plants that basically only grow around rocks, right, like so they, they're either there or they're not, they're five inches of meat or when they kind of die out, and then like they're not, they're not gonna go in the watering hole, um, they're more like, uh, I'll get pictures of them and I'll tell you the path, uh, but like ground growing kind of things, right? So if you have it, you have a little bit around the boulders, because you sort of think of how they're set, and then you have the still rock underneath, because they're not, they're not a deep root growing plants, they're just standing almost, you know, like it is there, it's there, but it gives a touch of color at different kinds of the year as well, which I kind of like to have a little bit of something in there, but you do it more like that, we're not trying to maintain, there'll be times where it's not there, there'll be times where it shows itself in more like even round cover, but I know there are ones that grow basically on rock.
Pots in the neighborhood.
Exactly, right, yeah, Nicole.
Nicole.
Yeah.
Nicole would be happy to give us some advice.
Yes, that's what I think, like I, I'd love to see some color, but I don't want it to be the kind of color where your plants are, you know, like I don't want that trip. Uh, but I do think that there are some things, that if we did, we chose rock garden, which I like, um, and I like the idea of having several big things, whether that's more of like, you know, a few pots and whatever, right, I don't know, but that, that's, I can go here or there, I don't care. Uh, but I love the idea of some sort of ground covers that could maintain themselves for the most part, that we don't have to replace every season, that we don't have to do things with, that are much more like, yeah, and they stay low to the ground, so you don't have to worry about any, you go to the cutbacks, or, you know, you're not putting any brats, and you have to cut back every year, all of this other sort of, you know, higher stuff, but rock is giving you the height, this is giving you a base, and then the bottom rock is great for.
Yeah, we don't have to decide, obviously, so I, we're a real slide, but they just wanted to be able to communicate to the contractors that this is not just going to be a top soil in the plant house situation, we're looking at a rock, basically mostly rock, and then maybe we add some plant or, or plant or whatever, then that can be decided later, but we just wanted to make sure that we had, going forward for the contractors to know, and with their responsibility. I think, you know, yeah, if everybody's comfortable with the idea that it will be majority rock base with.
Right.
Some, if, if land or boulders, TBD, right, in the future, then yes, I think that's good, I shouldn't know if they would want like.
I think we get a fleetable to gift side hole.
Oh, for sure, yeah, I mean, I, like you said, in the bull of the land, people.
Nicole, Nicole came out and was looking at it, kind of myself. And trying to figure out what can we do with this, yeah, she was only looking at the standpoint of what we have right now.
Right, right, figured that one.
But if we, if we, if we contacted her and said, look, this is what we're gonna do, it's gonna be forty feet, blah, 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 we're thinking about mostly rocking this, she'll have plenty of suggestions.
In terms of the contract for the company that would be doing the island, we can give them the direction that, you know, this is the kind of base that you need to leave us, and then that can be done at the.
At the expense.
Afterwards, you know, so as long as they know sort of what they're, what they're finishing up, it's to be, you're not, yeah, exactly, that's what, that's what. Okay, sounds good, different sense, sorry, last couple of things, um, we have a meeting Friday morning with GBA, Russ and I do, to talk about, uh, the grant strategy for Merrimack Station Road, so um, I've talked to Chris from GBA a couple of times, and they have really good feedback from East West Gateway on our project, so I'm feeling very optimistic that we will get this grant, um, it may be a transportation alternatives grant rather than the surface transportation program grant, but it will accomplish what we want, which is safety, sidewalks, besting infrastructure, and additional lighting over there, so we'll be finding out about that, and then also, other good news is that we got the phased plan for lost lighting, so that is for the electrical upgrade with the new lighting in the park. So I have invited them to be at our first board meeting in February, to present there, they've given us a two-year plan to, um, first put in the new light poles in the areas as determined by the park committee several years ago, and then, um, they've got some really cool programs, um, they've been talking to Phillips, uh, about them giving us some free equipment, because we would be the first city in the metropolitan area to try out this new sort of wifi and lighting equipment with wifi capabilities for dimming and for turning on the lights off and on, and so they're really excited about doing the project, Phillips is excited about it, and they want us to kind of be a model for future parks going forward, so that's very exciting, so they'll be at the meeting February fifth, um, the other exciting part about that is that if we decide to go with this phased approach, which will, um, likely require a slight amendment to our capital budget, but maybe not, maybe not huge, slight amendment, but they feel confident that.
Maybe shaking in your boots.
Small, they mentioned the capital budget.
Over.
Uh, they feel confident that they could get this installed by July fairies, so they said if they get approval, it'll take six, eight weeks to get the materials in, the boring would be new electrical all the way from the top of the hill, a few light up there by the traction closure, and then all the way down to the park and around the lake. That would mean that there might be some times where we may have to have the park closed, I haven't gotten details on that, but those are questions that you guys can ask when they come at the next meeting, but that is exciting, and I think that'd be wonderful, if we could get that done by July fairies, so we could have a good big impact, so. That's all I have, regrets.
Okay, um, the only comment I had was concerning the one forty-one intersection, uh, Dennis, obviously is not here tonight, he's at home recovering. Uh, we wish him well and, uh, he'll also get him back to meetings. And I think, uh, if necessary, when we have a little bit more time, if we can't make the next meeting, we'll try to get him somehow, hide it in. How he would like to hear it. Uh, tell me, any comments? Lisa?
No, I did notice the same thing with the intersection, and I was gonna mention that, uh, and so I'll just say the part that I noticed, uh, which was, this was yesterday? Monday, Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday, yes, it was Tuesday, either Monday night or Tuesday. Uh, but coming from Big Ben and going to Longmire to pick up my, my quarter, one of the lines comes off completely. Right, so like the person sitting in this lane has nowhere to go, and they're in the middle of the intersection. Out of nowhere.
Yeah.
Completely unacceptable, like I was literally like, oh my God, I'm glad someone left her next to me. But like that was, I was literally like, oh, what are we, you know, but I didn't realize that they weren't following it, like I didn't know.
Well, one thing, one thing I think I would like to sort of hint to, I know way back when, when I put this in, we got some agreement that we would take over the maintenance of that intersection. You know, when we started putting the planters up there and the trees up there, and I think there was some agreement about that intersection with maintenance. Uh, well, I think we need to research that.
Yep.
Make sure that part of that, everybody didn't say, we're responsible to clear it.
Yeah, I just think we haven't had the kind of snow that we just had, quite in the past, so, you know.
And I think, you know, we, we can, we, Crowder certainly can clear it, but doesn't, the only thing he'll do right now is throw a saw on it.
Right, yeah, it was just so cold that one.
Because it's greater liability in case something will happen, and it's not supposed to be filed, yeah. So I think that's something we need to, we need to research before we start. County and.
About that.
Yep. Um, I realized that I failed to post some video and photos over this driveway. Shared right, I, I need to do that, um, he's got very limited clearance in his trailer, uh, when I goes there, without a car. Um, so I need to get that out there so everybody can see it. It's Chris, I, I just want to make sure that there's still, get outside of the gap, the sheet, whatever the wall is.
Any final citizen comments? Okay, we're going to have a closed session, April, would you?
Section six ten, uh, zero two one horizontal and subject, the lesson you have made and adopted, the board all the members close meeting, the board is dealing with matters relating to the following. Section six one oh, zero two one three, hiring, firing, disciplining, promoting employees, and personal information of employee is discussed or recorded, and six, section six ten, zero two one thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records for performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment.
Have a portion. Give her a second, 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 roll call please.
Alvin Hytenhardt?
Yes.
Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Alvin Tchoko?
Yes. Okay, we're rolling now. The public meeting is going to close soon.